We worked on them today. These are the, this is a new set, so I don't know what the problem is. We're gonna keep working on it and figure it out, but, um, so, tonight, speak up, so everybody that can hear you, please. Um, at this time, we'll stand. I'll ask Commissioner Teager to say the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Holy Father, as we come together tonight in the name of Jesus to address the county business, Lord, I pray, Father, that you lead us, guide us, direct our path, and which way we should go. Lord, I ask that everything is done decently and in order. Father, will we vote on a school board member tonight? Lord, if it don't come out of our way, or anybody else's way, let us just agree, uh, to disagree, and go on. Lord, I ask that your will's done, not mine, but done. Father, I do pray for our military, wherever they are tonight, Lord, bless them, keep them, keep them safe. And, Father, I send up a special prayer from our brother Terry tonight, Lord, I pray, Lord, that you touch him, heal him, Lord, and him and Mark both, Lord, that they'll touch the hem of your garment, Lord. Thank you, Lord Jesus, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'll ask for a roll call.
Elijah Thomas.
Here.
Brian Teager.
Yo.
Rick Joyner.
Here.
Randall Redman.
Here.
Shane Hakes.
Here.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Terry Fitchey.
Here.
Lynn Schreit.
Here.
Archie Crier.
Here.
Melissa Fields.
Here.
Bradley Jones.
Here.
Clint Mathis.
Here.
Mark George.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Thank you, Pastor. Tonight, we'll be filling the vacancy of District 6 School Board Member due to a resignation of Ms. Candace Jones. Ms. Candace was kind enough to serve in her capacity. She received a job, um, that unfortunately took her away from the school board. We understand that, and we thank her for her time. We will be discussing and adopting rules and procedures for eliminating nominees, and coming to a conclusion, um, on the vacancy, alright? In front of everyone, I've printed off this, this page right here. It's simply procedures, instead of me speaking them out and, and taking a chance on everybody not understanding them, I just dotted them down. First order, we will accept nominations from commissioners. Commissioners may nominate more than one individual. The second step, we will verify the acceptance of nominations with nominees. That second step is in there because I goofed up. I had a guy, a gentleman, that wanted to be a nominee, come to me at the last commission meeting, and specifically asked me not to schedule this meeting on the 27th. He was gonna be out of town one night, and could not make it up. He's in California, and he's flying back whenever. I left that here in this office, and I went back to mine and scheduled this meeting on the 27th. It is completely my fault. However, um, we contacted C-TAS, they sent us the law. It is on page two. If anyone has any questions, it's TCA Code 5511. You may look at it. If anybody wants a copy of this in the crowd, I'll be happy to get you a copy of this. The third, we will allow every nominee tonight five minutes. Not five minutes and one second. We were specifically told five minutes. You'll have five minutes, um, to get up here, state your case, or however it may be, to the commission, uh, before a vote. Every nominee will have that right. And then, number four, we will take a roll call vote from all commissioners. All commissioners will vote tonight. The nominee who receives majority of the commission votes will be accepted. The majority of the commission will be eight votes, not seven or six. We have to get to eight. This is a majority of the entire commission, so we will have to get to eight votes. If there is no majority reached, the commission must vote on the two highest vote-receiving nominees until someone reaches eight. Will there be any questions about the procedures, and have I, can you think of anything that I have missed?
Motion to approve the procedure for, uh, filling the vacancy.
Say. Motion, Mr. Mathis, and Mr. Watkins. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Will there be any opposed? At this time, I'll take nominees.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I've had four individuals reach out to me wishing to be nominated for this vacancy, and with that, I will nominate Kyle Paso, Mr. Mike Keel, Mr. David Ross, and Ms. Brandy Hartigan. Mr. Keel did not be here tonight, however, I do have a signed and notarized letter by him saying that he will accept the nomination.
Do you mind reading that letter?
Sure. This letter is to affirm that I will serve as a Stewart County School Board Member for District 6 if nominated and selected by the Stewart County Commissioners. By my signature below, I pledge to, I pledge to accept the appointment and serve in the office for the remainder of the current term. Signed, Mike Keel. And I will pass this up to the clerk, and see if he can enter into the record.
Are those nominations clear? And will there be any other nominations? Can I have a motion to cease nomination?
Motion.
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If Mr. Kyle Paso is in the building, would you stand? Would you accept the nomination and fulfill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Keel's letter is on record. Mr. David Ross, if you're in the building, would you stand? Would you accept the nomination?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Brandy Hartigan, are you in the building?
Yes, sir.
Would you accept the nomination?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kyle Paso, if you would like five minutes, um, we would be glad to listen.
Uh, I'll make this short. Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for the nomination and your time today. I get asked frequently, why do you want to be on the school board? They say, it looks like a lot of work, and you have to deal with all these upset people. My answer to them is always the same. My life is in these schools. My two daughters, who are at DES right now, that will eventually go through the middle school and the high school. My wife, who is an aide, who is an aide at DES for special education children. Our friends' children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, cousins, and spouses are in these schools. The kid I coach in softball, soccer, or basketball. The kids I see in town at the Peds, at Westside, church, or the city park, they are in these schools. So what kind of father or man would I be if I didn't do everything in my power to provide the best possible help and guidance that I can for our community? At the end of last year, myself and Ms. Jones were handing a special election for this board seat. During that time, I went door to door, talking to everyone that I could in District 6. I listened to their frustrations and their praises of the school system. I attended board meetings, town halls, improvement meetings, answered calls, texts, and emails. During that election, I lost to Ms. Candace, but 41% of the district voted for me. A lot of them didn't know me until I went to their door. Since then, I still answer the calls, texts, and emails, attend the board meetings, and keep up with the frustrations and praises of the community. I know I missed the most recent town hall due to personal reasons, but I answered the questions, and they were emailed out to District 6. I have remained educated on the issues, solutions, and praises throughout our school system. Leaking roofs, air quality, energy updates, technological advances, budget, special education, child and teacher safety. If you choose to appoint me tonight, I promise to work diligently with the other board members to provide solutions, not just complain about problems, and follow through in the insertion of those solutions. I will be open with the community about decisions made in life. I will do my best to provide a bright future in our schools for our children, faculty, and staff. And lastly, I want to say thank you for all the hard work put in by all of the school system employees and SROs who give it their best every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. The next nominee was Mike Keel. I explained the steps to Mr. Keel, and he has sent in a video, um, to be played that
Good evening. Sorry I couldn't be with you there tonight, but, as sometimes happens with our best-laid plans, somebody goofed up. I'm not calling any names. Anyway, uh, I am grateful to have the opportunity to address you in this moment. There's not a lot that needs to be said at this point, I realize that, but I did want to, uh, go over a few points again, reemphasize stuff. I am a lifelong citizen of Stewart County. I think that's important. I think because of that, I have a good understanding of our way of life, our values. I have a deep appreciation for it. I am a husband to Regina. We have a 16-year-old daughter, Sarah, who is rising junior at Stewart County High School. Also have two adopted stepchildren, who each have five-year-old sons who will be entering kindergarten this fall. I, uh, as someone characterized, I have skin in my hands, but, the thing I've been struggling with, and a little hesitant to bring it up again, is my Christian faith. Concerning, some might see that as a virtue symbol, or trying to say, uh, pick me because I'm a good Christian. The reality is, I'm not a Christian because I'm a good person. I'm a Christian because God fully revealed to me that I wasn't good. I was, in fact, a sinner, and needed a savior, so I thank God for His son, Jesus Christ. But it is important that I continue to emphasize that point, because it's the worldview that I bring to the table, and all my decisions are going to be shaped by my Christian faith, and I hope that anything I do in my life will reflect that Christian faith. We, uh, we have a lot of challenges ahead, and we live in perilous times. And I don't want anyone to be deceived. The battle for the hearts and minds of our young people is not fought against flesh and blood. It's against principalities, against powers, against rulers of darkness and horror, and against spiritual wickedness and high blessing. And to take on these powers, we're gonna have to put on the full armor of God. So that's, my pledge to you is, I pledge to be available to hear from the community, parents and students, administrators and teachers, but more importantly, I pledge to be available to hear from God. Because whoever occupies this position is gonna need divine help and spiritual counsel to believe our school board, this time, because we live in perilous times. But, I won't be anxious about the outcome of the vote, because I'm already afraid of it, and I'm glad it was God's hand, so if this is the opportunity he intends for me, then he will incline your hearts to vote that way. He may intend to bless me by having you vote for someone else, but anyway, I have a vote. I thank you for your time and consideration.
You'll have five minutes when you're ready, sir. Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, taxpayers, fellow candidates. I'm David Ross. Children, our students, they all come first with me. Every student, every child, no exceptions. I'm a professionally licensed Tennessee public school teacher, federally highly qualified from kindergarten to 12th grade. We need a teacher on our school board. We need someone who knows what's going on in our schools each and every day. I'll bring a perspective that no one else has, and I'll ask questions that no one else will ask. I can tell you of my accomplishments, but none are without teamwork, and are only what God has allowed. I'm a taxpayer, I have grandnieces and nephews currently in every school in the system. I'm a lifelong resident of District 6. I spent 12 years in the Stewart County school system, Dover Elementary and Junior High, and a Stewart County High School class of 1975 graduate. I have multiple master's degrees from Murray State and Austin Peay. If appointed, I will work with the school board as a cordial, informed, respectful team member, and I will work with the director of schools, finance director of school. I tried to hurry up. You want to hurry up?
That's knowledge.
I tried to hurry up. If my asking and then pushing were truthful answers and complete answers to difficult questions on behalf of our teachers, our children, our support staff, taxpayers, then I'm doing the job that I've been instructed to do. I've been told by some that my efforts to get answers to hard questions, to understand what's happening with our children, our schools, make some feel anxious, somewhat intimidated, possibly, picked on, possibly bullied. What I have to say about that is, welcome to middle school. You've gotten a very small taste of what it's like for way too many of our children, what they face in public schools, day in and day out, year in and year out. We had a middle school student put himself out there and ask for help. I'm not blaming anyone, but he was told to deal with it himself, and he did. And I'm here to make sure that doesn't happen again. We need training, we need more training. I am a Christian warrior for our children, for my students. God is in our schools. I see Him every day in the actions of our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our test executives. Jesus knows my heart. Here's my vision. Our school board better get ready, charter schools are coming. We need to be proactive on charter schools, or the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission is going to be proactive for us. That is one possible, possible way that we could get a school back into the Cumberland City Carlisle area. I would look, and examine, and study, and ask questions of any charter school application that came by. I was asked if we should arm teachers. Yes, arm us with body cameras. Arm us with emergency hot buttons, directly to law enforcement, like bank tellers have. Then you'll get the experts with the assault weapons, firing on those with assault weapons. Given to our custodial staff who work by themselves sometimes at night. Finances and tax dollars, still looking over this $21 million budget, there's some things I'd like to see in there that aren't. We can really relitigate the past? I don't want to do that. It's time to move forward. It's past time. Our children are watching, parents are watching, hard-working taxpayers. Our children are our future. The future is now. Please put a teacher on the school board.
Ms. Brandy Hartigan?
Good evening. Like the mayor stated, my name is Brandy Hartigan. Uh, I've been in Dover for about two years now, uh, and even though I am not from Dover, uh, I come from an equally small town that has a good sense of community and Christian values. Uh, and in my mind, and in my belief, that there's no better place for our youth to grow up is in these small towns. The younger me would disagree. Uh, I didn't get away with a lot of teenage shenanigans, but I feel like that kind of speaks a little bit to my point about how important small towns are. So, after high school, I joined the US Military, the Air Force, where I served honorably for 13 years. I was faced with a decision when I found out I was pregnant with my daughter. Uh, I was in a career field where it took me away from home the majority of the time, so I could stay and pursue my career in the military, or I could get out and be consistent for my child. So, I chose the latter. Fast forward to now, um, my family's ended up in Dover, and I'm excited for that, a small town which my daughter, I'm sure, will begrudge at some point, but know that there'll be a community there to look out for her. So, uh, in the time that I've been here, I've had the opportunity to work as a TA, a substitute teacher, and a proctor at Dover Elementary School. I mean, I'm, in that time, being here and having the opportunity, I've met a lot of great people in this community. They go above and beyond for our children and our community. I've followed things, uh, the concerns, um, I've been to the school board meetings, um, I understand the hard work that the school board puts in, and everybody behind the scenes that might not get shown to the public, and then I've also heard the parents' concerns, mine being one of them at some points. Parents and the community, I feel, just want to make sure that they're heard, especially when it comes to raising the families, um, which kind of brings me here tonight. I realize I'm an 11th-hour addition. Um, I haven't had the chance to really knock on people's doors or introduce myself until now, hence the background that I'm giving. But I, I come before you guys, uh, for the possibility of this seat with no politics. I come with no personal agenda to further, other than our children's, and to give possibility to the next generation of free thinkers, uh, and especially in a society that's facing the challenges that they are, and the confusing times that are this generation's. So, uh, I understand that the, it's throwing a little bit of a bullseye tonight to try to make sure that I can get a consideration for these great candidates behind me, uh, but any, any nomination was greatly considered, and any vote would be appreciated. Thank you for your time.
I'm not for sure whether roll call vote will stop tonight, or start tonight. It will start wherever it stopped, or the rotation stopped last, right? Okay? At this time, we will begin a roll call vote.
Lynn Schreit.
Kyle.
Archie Crier.
Mr. Paso.
Melissa Fields.
Aye.
Bradley Jones.
Cow.
Clint Mathis.
Kyle Paso.
Mark George.
Alan Martin.
Alexis Taylor.
David Ross.
Elijah Thomas.
Kyle.
Brian Teager.
Mike.
Rick Joyner.
Yo.
Randall Redman.
Kyle.
Shane Hakes.
Mike Keel.
Eric Watkins.
Mike Keel.
Terry Fitchey.
Is everyone satisfied with the vote being seven for Kyle Paso, five for Mike Keel, two for David Ross, out of the 14 votes? Is everybody satisfied with that? We will begin a new vote. Your nominees at this time will be Kyle Paso and Mike Keel. Those will be the only two selections that you have. Does everybody understand that? Okay.
Lynn Schreit.
Kyle.
Archie Crier.
Mr. Paso.
Melissa Fields.
Mike Keel.
Bradley Jones.
Kyle.
Clint Mathis.
Kyle Paso.
Mark George.
Alan Martin.
Alexis Taylor.
Kyle.
Elijah Thomas.
Kyle.
Brian Teager.
Mike.
Rick Joyner.
Mike.
Randall Redman.
Kyle.
Shane Hakes.
Mike.
Eric Watkins.
Uh, Kyle.
Terry Fitchey.
So, that's the final, Kyle Paso, nine, Mike Keel, five. Is everyone in agreement with that, and accept that vote? Kyle Paso, if you will remain after the meeting, Ms. Hartson will need to swear you Item number six is the approval of budget amendments, and I will ask Chairman of the Budget Finance to handle this.
Uh, budget amendments are on page two through seven. You will look at your packet. Uh, page number two, page number three are line items printed first. Page number four has several different items, and Ms. Heather has got pretty good descriptions of what they're for on each one of those items. Page number five are line items, and also descriptions of the other stuff. Six is a line item, seven is a line item. And budget amendment approved, each and every one of these, from the full commission, and if you have any questions, Ms. Heather will be there to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions concerning the budget amendments? Motion to approve. John, your second, five. I'd ask for a roll call vote, since some of this has moved the money.
Lynn Schreit.
Yes.
Archie Crier.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Mark George.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teager.
Yes.
Rick Joyner.
Yes.
Randall Redman.
Yes.
Shane Hakes.
Yes.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Terry Fitchey.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Item number seven is a resolution to amend the estimated beginning fund balances for Item number seven is a resolution to amend the estimated beginning fund balances for twenty-two, twenty-three. Motion to approve by Dorch?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dill.
Vince Gray.
Yes.
Archie Crier.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Mark Dorch.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teber.
Yes.
Rick Joyner.
Yes.
Randall Redman.
Yes.
Shane Kates.
Yes.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Terry Fitchey.
Yes.
Item number eight on tonight's agenda, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations in Stewart County. This is beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two, and ended in twenty-twenty-three. If we have any questions, we will defer to Ms. Heather.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dorch, second.
Procreations, another roll call, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Vince Gray.
Yes.
Archie Crier.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Mark Dorch.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teber.
Yes.
Rick Joyner.
Yes.
Randall Redman.
Yes.
Shane Kates.
Yes.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Terry Fitchey.
Yes.
Item number nine on tonight's agenda is the approval of a copier lease agreement with RJ Young. Again, if you have any questions, I know Ms. Heather has worked tirelessly on this lease agreement, so we can get her the questions, you can get the answers if you have any.
This is the same company we've always used, isn't it? Oh, give it a proof.
Motion by Mr. Dorch, second by Mr. Joyner. It's got money involved. It's not supposed to stay by states for nine.
Sorry. It may work. Vince Gray.
Yes.
Archie Crier.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Mark Dorch.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teber.
Yes.
Rick Joyner.
Yes.
Randall Redman.
Yes.
Shane Kates.
Yes.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Terry Fitchey.
Yes.
Agenda item number ten is the approval of surplus property. It's a two thousand and one Dodge white three-quarter ton van that is in my parking lot currently at the mayor's office because it has bit the dust. I'm motion to approve. By Mr. Watkins, second by Ms. Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guys, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, especially the nominees. We had four outstanding nominees tonight. Don't, I appreciate the commission going above and beyond and taking care of this tonight. Sorry you had to come back because I didn't get the notice in the paper in the right time the first time, but we'll work on that as we go. Also, this election will be August of twenty-twenty-four, so there's only about a year's difference